Call the September twenty six, twenty twenty two regular meeting of the Southwestern City School District Board of Education to order local.
Also here Caldwell here it's Martindale. Here Johnson.
Here. Next we need a motion to adopt this evening's agenda.
So move Schreiner.
Thank you, we need a second. Caldwell, are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Schreiner.
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
It's Martindale.
Yes. Now need a motion to approve the minutes from the September twelfth meeting. Thank you, Mr. Caldwell, we need a second. Thank you, Mrs. Martindale. Are there any corrections to those? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Mr. Martindale.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes. Now, the first of our two presentations tonight.
Well, nice like this, it's uh reminds me how fast things seem to go because we're here at the end of the project. Although we spent a lot of time, so it took its time. But we we have a sort of a lot of the takeaways. The word that we use a lot in this district is lessons learned and what we've done. And I think we've learned some really good lessons and I think we've learned some challenging things and we've lived through a pandemic and we've built through a pandemic. And I think that's quite remarkable that we are here today with occupied schools. There we go. I'll start with Jackson. My pictures, by the way, are from my iPhone. Our professional photography is being done as we speak. In fact, Cindy and Evan have been touring through a couple of schools with our photographers. And Jackson, we we did some gap filling. We increased the capacity to gym, we created a secondary athletic space. We created two full science labs, three classrooms, two small group rooms and some teacher workspace. All the little things that we've learned since we built the original Jackson twenty years ago. And we were building as part of the new middle schools, we included. We we got good things like brick color matches and scale matches. Our our pandemic supply chain issues got more severe at this school, but we did finally make it with everything, including mechanical systems and boilers. Which were very late. We're feeling really good about where it fit. It doesn't change the look and feel of Jackson. We got to create a covered bus walkway for students. That was another challenge lesson learned. We had to put a dry preactive sprinkler system in it to get it to work with the code officials. But it's a great way now to get out of the building and get all the way to the buses before you step into any inclement weather. We matched colors of the old Jackson and as well as the new middle schools. We changed the LVT in the new building, but we we were sure we were compatible with the colors as we touched them. So the big common stairway in Jackson is the way we connect to the new part of the building. We copied things from the four new middle schools in terms of some of the finished patterns. We're feeling very good about the feel and look. We have very modern LED lighting. Again, we have lots of new things in this part of Jackson and some teacher workrooms. That we are very happy with in terms of how they turned out. For middle schools, again, the look and feel of what we started with here. This was almost, this was rendered almost thirty months ago. And the way we look today, this is at our last dedication in Finland. Feeling very good about, again, the scale of the way the buildings turned out, the the colors. The complementary connections to the elementary schools, especially on a site like this where we are right across the street. But the uniqueness of their own sort of identity with with the corner windows. Yeah, everything we planned sort of turned out the way we planned it. We're pretty happy about that. Rendered areas, I mean, this again is a two-year-old rendering and if you walk in that school today, it's that. Feeling really good about the bright colors, but not overwhelming colors. These are warm schools, they feel good. And again, they have their own kind of look and feel, a little different from the elementaries, a little different from the high schools. Finding their own place as middle school. These are nice, big, open spaces. One of the things the office staff said is they needed more space to handle traffic. We did that. One of the things the students asked for were larger hallways and larger stairways. And the traffic flow is big and they get to sense it every day personally. And so we went over the OSTM recommended widths for hallways and stairways and we got them to be larger and more open. We got natural light connecting to a lot of places in the inner part of the school by coming through some storefront from outside walls. We have displays for the art area. Again, all these looks at the same area, but the amount of traffic it flows through here is quite great, but it's it was designed that way. We have twelve thirteen-foot quarters in this main section of the building. Media Center got really into the sort of public library models we've been seeing lately. Grove City Public Library, especially the breakout rooms that seem to be so good. That mix of furniture, the mix of scale, still books, still book shelves and the librarians filled them nicely. Again, the colors bit bold, love the views from the higher second story corner windows from the reading room. The interesting furniture and yet all of it has chargeable ports in it for iPads and iPhones and Chromebooks. Feeling really good about the light and openness of these rooms. And the brightness and then these weren't filled yet and the TV wasn't on the wall when I was taking this picture, but they are there now. So it does feel really, really good in terms of the technology integration, that's how things look. These are those breakout rooms that we that we really liked at Grove City Library. There's a color for each one of these breakout rooms or some up to twelve and some just for four. But they all are filled with technology, they're all filled with natural light and they're student places for students to break out and do work on their own. Really thinks middle school students will take advantage of this. Pretty happy with how that turned out. There's a TV missing there, but this is a breakout space in the larger reading room. And if you can get sit up corner like at a coffee table height or I mean at a a counter kitchen counter table height, then you can do work with other students. The furniture was a big deal, the lighting was a big deal and the technology which is now there. Conference breakout spaces, again, not always, you know, showing up in schools and especially middle schools, but these are for, again, not just teachers but students as well. The idea that we don't have a formal stage is still great because this really works in terms of how you can gather and and do different kinds of layouts. We already got to see sort of the audience layout with the dedications. And so we know that's how that looks. And again, the way the daylight works, the way the room works, your distance from the stage is quite small, but it's still a nice big room. And again, flooded with daylight. Happy about. This is really cool, the branding of the four middle schools, kind of get a little bit of a sense of should we make four identical prototype schools? But the district, Evan especially, and some students from the career academy, you help brand these schools. So the school colors are engaged into the athletic areas. The new logos are fantastic, the big giant murals in the in the hallway are fantastic. So this is where you get the difference, this is where you feel each school. And obviously you know where you are and you see these colors and you see these these logos. Pretty nice. And that's just wonderful. And that's right at the intersection of the two longest hallways. A great sense of you know where you are as you come right in front door of the school. Imagine a lot of pictures going to be taken in front of those. Again, you know where you are, this is Finland, the colors tell you, the logos tell you. And the entry. Pleasant view. Green. And Norton. Our auxiliary gyms were a big boost. It was an investment on the district outside of what the state co-funded, but fantastic. The delight on the in the eyes of the folks who work here and not just the PE teachers, but everybody knowing that there's an additional large-scale space where they can break out. Made people really happy. I get this magazine now, was great to see the cover talking about new middle schools. This is cool in that the bricks and mortar isn't what this article is about. It says new schools, but we're looking at the same traditions and culture in each of the schools. That's really cool. These principals will all work really hard to make sure that happened. And this is a great article, if you haven't read it. It made me feel good about the background that architecture plays to what's really happening. It's all about people that occupy the buildings. This was a cool space, another one where the teachers are delighted, not just the teachers that use this room, but all the teachers in the building. Having a large-scale, almost lecture breakout conference type of room that isn't in many schools at all in my entire thirty-eight-year career. It is a room that a lot of teachers had a lot of great ideas. They drove the idea to do this. It's exactly two classrooms. If we ever decide this is a lesson learned the wrong way, we can undo that, but I doubt that'll ever happen because this room is already very, very popular. We hosted an OFCC meeting. It was great, they appreciated it and this was a great space to do that. So it's also a great community public space, I imagine, as you think through how the building is going to use. Teachers push this, the OSTM talks about hundred fifty square foot small group rooms. They said that that doesn't give us a lot of flexibility in terms of how we send students to those kind of spaces to do it. So they they talked us into doubling the space to three hundred and thirty square feet, which we did. And they are really cool spaces, they have a lot of technology, they have interesting furniture. And they have a lot of opportunities to be used differently than this furniture. That long bench can be a seated space. Again, their storage printers, technology all part here and these occur right in the pods of the classrooms. So you're not very far from a group of classrooms if you and a group of students are going to be using these kinds of spaces. Again, not anywhere in the OSTM manual is a room this size. So it's a it's gonna maybe a new lesson learned when we talk about middle schools in the future. Music, always think music teachers ask for too much, even though I love music and I was a big fan of music in high school. But they they really compelled us to talk about a third music space and I I learned as we went through this why. The time it takes to set up music spaces and the time it takes to customize them for what you need, they can stay the way they need to stay. Instrumental music can stay set up, this is the most important. The risers in vocal music can stay set up and you don't have to take them down and put them up daily because you have other kinds of classes using this room. So the third music space became the flexible space. And so it is more flexible, it has racks of chairs that can be set up and taken down however you need the space, even if it's for non-music. But the idea that the third third room in the hallway with the music rooms was a great idea. And and again, we learned why it was a great idea as we looked at the equipment and the setup and the take down, which is an operational thing, not a bricks and mortar thing. Again, wide hallways, color patterns. Access into restrooms wide open, so things feel good, things can be monitored well. You can stand at this point in the building in front of the lecture room and you can see most of the academic part of the school from one position. Wide hallways, good colors. We toned down our pattern a little bit by actually kicking it around in the dirt in the school with the color tiles and we came up with what I think is is really good. We found a really good balance. I like the neutral lockers, something I've never tried. Our interior designers talked us into it, let the colors be in the floor and let the lockers be neutral. Lot of specialty classrooms, this is a STEM lab with cord reels and special furniture. Again, counter heights, they can roll those tables up to the counters if they need water or sinks or other things engaged in this kind of classroom. Corner windows are my favorite, it was ambitious, it was challenging. It was a lot of detailing for the architecture side, but it was also a lot of coordination for the construction side. And with our pandemic supply chain issues, we had some pieces and parts that didn't come. So it was tough, but it really came out nice, it looks good. We got to see how they look long term. This is my favorite, when you come up to the school, you see that warm background from behind the reception desk, you feel very welcome. It feels very warm and welcoming there and those folks inside can see from the parking lot all the way down to the end of the driveway. Because of the corner window and the and the opening width that they get with those corner windows. So that turned out to be a kind of a my best experience in terms of the corner windows. In terms of what it allows for both visitors and for the folks welcoming visitors to the school. New people involved in construction, it's funny, I don't know if this was custodians or whether this was contractors. And this is a little innocent thing, they put everything in ninety degrees, they didn't understand what they were for, they're handrails to go up the railing. So this is a lesson learned that every time you do a project, the same people with the same experience aren't necessarily involved. People worked their butts off to get these schools clean and open. And I don't know, again, who who it was that did that, but I it makes me smile because it's a very simple thing they did wrong, but obviously they'd never seen one before. Dedications went great, we had the space for it, we had the turnout for it. Very nice things said by all involved, including the facilities commission, they were a great partner in this. Community turnout was great, we had a good time. Lot of people on this team talked about how many times we've done this over and over. And I will end with saying that our firm started ten years ago. We were in the middle of the elementary school projects, which is my former firm. And I don't think we would have survived our initial couple of years had we not had the relationship we had in this district. So all of those ten people thank all of you for the relationship we have in this district because it it's given them a long-term proposition and a job. And we don't take that for granted, Cindy and I really appreciate our relationship with this district. So I think students. You.
Yeah, I'm gonna speak a little bit to my name to recap of the project so so far. Here at Southwestern, we like to pride ourselves on a couple of things being having promised promises that being on time and on budget. I'm gonna talk through some of those briefly tonight where we are with those signs, those specific items. So when we started this project out, passed the bond issue, got the funds in in place and started down the path of design and and budgeting. We had a little monkey wrench thrown at us with the pandemic. Many challenges like inflation, labor shortages, material shortages, all those things were out there. And the main project, when we came out to our voters, we said we wanted to give you new middle schools, want to renovate Jackson. We're gonna renovate East Franklin, we're gonna do some paving projects, we're gonna do root replacements at Grove City and Weston rec centers. And so what we were able to do is before we got headed far too far down that path, we knew that the budget constraints were there. So we had to be thinking a little bit outside the box and some of the things we're gonna do. So first of all, we pulled off the dating project, so that was three million dollars that we had allocated and told our public that we were gonna do those projects. But at the beginning, we we wanted to make sure we delivered on the new middle schools and renovations, the other things that we had out there. We prioritized and said those those could be taken off for a minute, so. One of the things that I needed, I want to point out is there are some LFI dollars, some locally funded initiatives that were put into this. And those are things that we provide dollars above and beyond what the state provides. As you can see from the slide, the state gives us roughly fifty percent, they give us fifty percent. So anything they will do will match at fifty percent. Some things in the LFI, if you don't know, what they provide sometimes isn't what we would like and we know our public wants. So for our middle schools, we don't want concrete block on the outside. We would like either masonry or some sort of brick-looking material. And we did some value engineering on this, we were able to put up tip-up walls from a distance. You can tell that they they look fantastic, even up close, I think they look wonderful as well. But I saved a lot of money doing it that way. There is some masonry there, but we we have mostly it's the tip-up walls with brick veneer. We also provided buildings with standing seam metal roofs instead of just those low-sloping roofs. We think these are a little bit other buildings that we've done have had that quality of a roof. We think in the long run, it's it's much better for us. Also for the LFI's, we were able to provide tracks at each one of our middle schools, which is important to our kids. So they're they're able to have their own track, it's a it's a nice track that they can compete on. So we felt that was important. Jackson Middle School, one of the LFI, the locally funded initiatives there was that we have an alternate gym there. That space is is wonderful for practice time, you know, they only had the one gym, it was really hard to get all the practices in. So this helps with, you know, getting getting kids home at a better time and just a lot of scheduling issues that when they only had the one gym. East Franklin was a total remodel. If you haven't, if you haven't had the chance, I suggest you go over there and really check out that building. We've had a couple successes before with remodeling buildings in the district. If you go to Hayes and the media, that was one that we redid, that was the old Pulsey Hayes Tech School, turned that into intermediate school. And we took that that same concept over to East Franklin. New flooring, HVAC, you know, roof, you just go in there, it looks like a brand and brand-new building and it's it's really a wonderful little building that we have over there. And then the roof replacements, you can see those are still going on if you've been around Grove City High School or over at Weston, those are those are underway. But we we wanted to provide all those things. Now fortunately, with our on-time, on-budget, you know, philosophy we have here, we got we got things done on time. Just in time, I guess. Sometimes it's there's a there's a big rush. If you if you're in one of our new buildings about a month out and you haven't been through the process before and you go in there and say, this is never gonna get done. And then Bill would just say, it'll be fine, it'll be fine. And it did, we got we got all those open and everything worked out great, but what we've been able to do with our, you know, value engineering, making sure we've really watched our Ps and Qs on what's going on with our buildings. We feel like we have, we're gonna have a little bit, if you look at the bottom line, we're gonna have a little bit of a remaining balance. So we're a little bit under after we took off the the roofs. We also have some contingency dollars that we think will still come back to us in about a million dollars. So looks like the the paving projects that we took off will be able to put back on. So that, we really felt good about that. We didn't want to come to you and tell you that, you know, we couldn't do everything that we wanted to do. But we feel like with all the hard work that our architects have put in, our construction companies, we and the board, we've done a great job to make sure to try to bring this thing on time, on budget and keep all our promises. So we're, I feel pretty good about all that, I hope you guys do too, because we've been working hard at it.
Let me echo a couple of things. Thank Mike, we just, our focus kind of worked, you know, Will might probably does a better job on the front end and engaging people and giving them what they ask for. It always makes me nervous early in the process to be on those meetings with Mike because he says, oh yeah, we can do that. And I'm thinking, I'm not sure I will do that. And okay, I'll take care of it. And he delivers time and time again, more than I ever thought he would. The example is the auxiliary gyms, those are not co-funded by OFCC. But we heard very clearly from staff and parents, transportation back and forth with seventh and intermediates for practice is really hard to get them back and forth. So we were able to develop a system even for Jackson with the auxiliary space, where hopefully they can do all practices if they want to right after school. They don't have to go somewhere else for track, I mean, all those things came to fruition. Really, Mike deserves most of the credit for that and the way he listens to parent groups and others. It's it's something to be very proud of. Couple of pieces I want to highlight, just from a board substantial completion date for all of these with September one. Why is that important? Because that's when our warranties kick in. So we have one-year warranties that essentially go, most of those things are covered with that September one. We'll run them on what we call an eleven-month walkthrough. I think it's scheduled for the for your second week of June, whether it's truly eleven months or not. The idea that stuff still needs to be functioning at that point. So check through all those processes at that time. For staff in those buildings, if you've ever built a new house or put in the vision or anything else on, many times what you envisioned, people communicate. Let's get in, it's not what we thought. And so we kind of said, we hear you, just live with it for six months and then let's talk. And so so you really get a feel and a flavor and examples, I I'll just give you two. Mike had mentioned the small group BLA spaces, they're three thirty. This is our first experience with those. We did a hundred and twenty square feet in the elementaries. You remember, a hundred and fifty or intermediate. And then we tried something larger at one point with the high school, all the high school just turned it into a classroom. And so we were trying to find this balance of how big can you make it so you can hire, take ten, twelve kids before it becomes a classroom? And if you go too small, it becomes an office. So we were trying to find that right balance that keeps that flexibility in that space, this is our first try. The other thing, and it's subtle, all of the other construction we've done, we put wainscote up. We painted the wall dark up about three feet. If you know anything about K through six Ks, they tend to put their hands on everything. And so it looks dirty real fast. We were hopeful that because we wanted that light, bright feel, that we could not wainscote the middle schools. Be real honest, we may be back here two years from now painting up four feet on the wall because we had the same issue with seventh and eighth graders and it just looks dirty in our in our hurry or they dragged the pulp bags. But we thought we'd give that a try as well. Mike also mentioned the corner windows, architecturally very attractive, but I will tell you from a technical standpoint, compared to the punch windows, not nearly as as simple. So we'll watch that over time and see if that's not a lesson learned as well. But very proud, we don't intend to bring the project back to the board for any conversation. This is a real kind of our closeout, because you saw the draft budget, the only thing we don't know is how much we'll get back in contingency. Whatever it is, we'll dump into the pavement projects, we promised community we went to the bond in twenty eighteen and be able to deliver on that. We are proud of the facilities and we thank all the staff and and our partners. I saw Kirk Chancellor in the back. He's the HVAC guy and and as well as plumbing and electrical and all those other pieces that make the mechanics work, so he's been a good partner in these projects as well. So we're proud of segment two. We are starting to get questions about segment three. Segment three, we communicated in this court pass action to get us on the list. Here that the best timeline for the district at this point is twenty twenty-six. Go back and consider a bond issue for Westland and Grove City High Schools. Those are the oldest facilities and essentially, give or take a little bit, the only building that hasn't been touched since two thousand. So we'll take a look at that, not that that's the only thing we can do, we'll go through an entire process and look at enrollment protection and all things, see if there are other needs as the community grows before we make any of those decisions. But when you look out from a timeline perspective, that makes sense. That does not close our OFCC project because they don't consider it done until you touch all buildings. At this point, I'm communicating, we think it's a little too early to go back from intermediates. Because of the fact that we did it in two thousand, we would rather have a little more age on them so that OFCC matches in the higher percentage. And that's probably looking at twenty thirty-two or somewhere in that ballpark. So all of that is subject to change, those are all change, those are all board decisions. But that's what we have the stage set for at this point. We anticipated segment three retention and a segment four down the down the road to close that project. Once it's closed, you are then out of the loop with OFCC, or any current roles for twenty years before they come back. The other important piece to remember, and I don't know if she wants to speak to it or not, is is there is the half mill set aside, complete with segmentation, you put it in clearly, it knows what we are starting to build, a fund already dedicated to the facilities that OFCC has touched for further for fixes. If the roof goes wrong twenty years from now, there'll be money there to help offset those costs for the inflation, I don't know what a roof will cost in twenty years. But at the end of the day, there will at least be some money to do that. We haven't touched any of it. After those dollars, at this point, we're starting to build that fund. So thank you for for that. And again, if there are any questions, you've got the professional, but it's probably the last time you'll see Mike regarding this segment anyway.
One, thank you, thank you to the whole team that made that happen. I was one of those nervous people, I'm on the top one, there's no way this building's gonna open. And when we walked into the dedication, I was just surprised about how beautiful they were and how two things that that are heard back from the community, I don't know why, I need to help dispel one and then answer the other. The one that I think needs to spell is enrollment numbers. Do we have the capacity to meet the needs of the community now and in the foreseeable future? And the second question, I need to answer is performance arts space. Some of the schools used to have theaters, now they're saying we don't have that. I know that wasn't part of the design, I mean, with the state, we just addressed that.
Specifically in middle schools for performing arts?
Yeah.
With the performing arts, we did buy stages that they could set up the gym for large concerts. And we also built the cafeteria in such a way that they could do smaller concerts for up to three hundred very comfortably. So OFCC money as part of the core project, built, buy those stages so they could set up gyms for for that diaphragm. And that still uses it, those are your brother practices if they wanted to. You are correct, there is not a traditional theater. That's not part of the funding, which will really prove to be a challenge in the next round for the high schools. They are not co-funded there, it's the stage and stage lighting, it's not seating in the general theater, so that's a locally funded, that that will drive some significant costs. But we're pretty comfortable, the other thing that we did, since they don't have a traditional theater, Mike mentioned that on the second floor is that large group room. We tried to put a room of of that would hold a hundred people. You've ever done a PTA meeting or a staff meeting or tried to bring multiple groups of kids together in some of the spaces, they just aren't equipped for that. And so we think that classroom setup will play very nicely in a lot of them. So we'll see what the middle schools find out as they move in and whether they like them or not. But we think there are at least two options, a large group presentation and large group performances there. There's question.
Enrollment projections.
Yeah, enrollment projections, OFCC enrollment projections do not have us growing by any significant way over the next ten years. We will revisit those probably in twenty-four, twenty-five. That is based on the life birth rate for the state of Ohio as well as historical numbers. They fundamentally have communicated to us in the last, as we prepared for the last round. They think because Central High was such a a growing part of the state and one of the few growing parts of the state, that our our enrollment has been held artificially high. But that will continue to level off. And so a thousand students, fifteen hundred students more is what you'd expect if you look at the last four to five years. We've actually seen enrollment dip. We think when our October enrollment count comes out this year, we'll actually see a slight increase. But I'm in the neighborhood of a hundred students. Like, saw it during the late twenty seventeen, twenty seventeen, eighteen, whatever, six hundred and fifty eight. Morpsy mode math that I've seen at this point. Um, a morpheus map that I've seen at this point, it would appear that they don't consider us a first or second wave. From a standpoint because of the drive time to get to that facility, that would spend us more than forty minutes out. They just don't believe that.
You don't?
You don't, what did I say?
You just said the morpheus study.
Oh, the morpheus study in regard to intel on following. Um, they see us as a driving distance where we're probably going to see a minimal impact instead of significant. So again, we'll revisit those. Uh, we do have a bubble of students that are now in the fifth and sixth grades, so those spaces are tight. But when you look at our elementary numbers, well, we are back into that. Students per grade level. Now, it's not always spaced in the right place. So that's the next challenge. So I don't want to communicate that our boundaries are set forever. We have had no conversation. I have no reason to believe we need to have a conversation about high school boundaries. Let me put an end to that conversation, please, because that's usually where I just meet up most. Elementary is a different conversation. I would be surprised if we don't have to have some conversations about elementary boundaries. The next three, five years, I don't know what. But I will be surprised if we don't have.
I would just like to follow up on one of Mr. Caldwell's, uh, questions in regards to performing arts. In the past, have we not allowed middle schools to use high school auditoriums as well?
Excellent. Yeah, that, and that's absolutely right. The middle schools are welcome to use high schools. We see that a lot for some of the larger schools. So choose not to.
In fact, the folks at Jackson who have a full blown stage, but cafeteria to do it from, said they would rather use the high school than, than use what the facilities they have at Jackson. So that kind of pushed us away from, you know, or the actual stage with fly space and stuff, because the high schools are going to be so well equipped.
Thank you.
Well, I just would like to comment, say, thank you so much walking through and then again seeing the photographs tonight. It's been amazing stuff. And I love how you listen to the input from teachers, people that are actually there, uh, day in and day out. Thank you for your excellent work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. About all of yours after the next.
Thank you. President Johnson, Vice President Caldwell, members of the board, Dr. Wise and Mr. Garcia. I get the pleasure tonight of, um, giving a synopsis of our latest state report card, which was released a little over a week ago. Um, thanks, I appreciate that. Uh, the first thing I want to start out with is it is new. Um, we have seen several iterations of the state report card card over the years, and this year is no different. I always liken the state report card to, it's sort of like going to your doctor. You do two things. First of all, you pay your copay. And then the second thing that happens is they weigh you. We won't talk about that. But then they take your blood pressure. And that's sort of what the state report card is. It is a blood pressure about how are we doing? What does it look like over time? And it tells a very important story, but it's not the whole story. And underneath all of that are a lot of diagnostic benchmark assessments that we use day to day to help guide our instruction and our practice to ensure that we're growing and providing opportunities for students. The most significant change that occurs in this iteration of the report card is the state abandoned the A through F system we grew to know. And we've moved now to a star rating. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about the star rating. There are five of them. Five's the max and one is the least. Five would indicate from a state perspective that we are significantly in, um, exceeding what the state expects of us. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on four because we didn't have any, but three would be the state standard now. That is what the expectation is. Two means we need a little bit of support to meet that state standard. And one I also won't talk about, but it indicates a significant need to grow and support in that area. There are six performance categories on the new report card. And I'm going to tell you just a little bit about them as they've changed. The first one is achievement. And this indicator, um, measures is, is use, uses the measure of the performance index to come up with the state rating. And I'll try to simplify a very complex mathematical formula, but the performance index really is, it takes every state test, assigns a point value of zero to a student and take it. And you earn more and more points, the higher student score. So it gives a real barometer of our students accelerating and performing better over time. The next, uh, key piece is the early literacy piece. This has been renamed. It used to be called the K-three progress indicator. They renamed it just to early literacy and it focuses on three key parts now. Achievement, diagnostic and promotion. And I'm going to talk a little bit about that here in just a minute. Graduation rate is one familiar to us, but the formula changed. Now it's weighted. And you get, uh, sixty percent of that grade is focused on the four-year graduation rate. And forty percent is focused on the five-year graduation rate. Again, I'll talk a little bit more about that as I get to how we fare. The next one is progress. The rating for progress is measured by value added and it looks at three years. Your most current year earns fifty percent of the grade. And the two years prior to that earns twenty-five percent each of that score, or I guess that star, star rating. And gap closing. This is also one familiar to us, but they've changed some of the metrics. And now it includes how our gifted students are performing overall, our EL students improving over time. And it continues to look at our subgroup performance in the areas of math, English language arts and graduation. And finally, the sixth one, which I'm not going to spend a lot of time on, will come into play in twenty twenty-five. And it is called now the college career workforce and military readiness, uh, rating. And it was formerly, it's a revamp of what we knew before as prepared for success. So how do we do? These are the stars that our district earned. And I'm going to jump right into the two stars because obviously those are our lowest ratings. Let's start first with graduation. I told you last year that the district earned the highest graduation rate in the history of the district. That is true. And we were sad to see the second star here. Um, what I would tell you is it's a couple of students. We missed that third star. So we were sad about that. But with the new calculation of the sixty forty, um, it threw that weight off just a little bit. And remember, this is the class of twenty twenty-one that we're talking about here, because this is a year in the rears. So we're still cleaning up the data from this year. But based on this new calculation, we predict that's going to be relatively flat and real close. Um, so we'll see where that comes in next year. Early liter, the new early literacy is a complicated one. Uh, it, it just quite frankly is an area we continue to focus. When you talk about our students coming in and the starting line, we have students who've never seen the alphabetic code, the students who are ready to read. That, that's not different than anywhere else, but it's exacerbated and, and enlarged here. I talked about this several years ago with the board who have sat in the seat for a long time. Uh, the state offers a menu of diagnostic assessments that you can use in this area. And we chose one that was showing what we believed at the time to be true. Our students were actually performing better than we thought they were able. And we were earning As and Bs in this area. And we had a long conversation that we needed a diagnostic that shows us a more realistic picture, although that's going to cost the depth. And here it is. Um, this, this data is even more tricky to predict and watch. We're focused on every kid every day. This data looks at two years in the rears. So this is not only data from last fall. This is data from two years ago comparing the two. So that becomes a very complex measure to track and follow over time. Um, that's where we really hone in on those diagnostics internally to spend time with those and pay attention to them closely. Let's jump to that achievement score where we're nailed right where the state expects us to be. We're very proud of that. Um, there's, is there work to do? Of course there's work to do. Um, but that means that we are performing and our children, those point values assigned continue to accelerate. And our performance index score this year was about five percent higher than it was last year. So we're pleased with that. And then right at the bottom of the list, we have two five stars. Far exceeding with the state expects of us. And that is in the area of both progress and gap closing. One of the things this district is very good at, we're very proud of, is we take turns for the R and we take them as far as we can. And the state of Ohio out of about, I want to say it was eight hundred and thirty-seven, the eight thirties. We were number ten in the state with the value of rating, rating. And as a district of this size, um, we couldn't be more proud of our staff and our families and the children that we serve and how we're getting them to where they want to be. And that five star far exceeds state expectations and gap closing is an indication, again, I think it's tied to the progress. Some of those subgroups, as we look at them, we're helping close those gaps between all students and where they're currently performing. That's a good thing. And I think those two ratings go hand on, tandem, hand in hand in tandem. Excellent. So what are some takeaways and next steps? We're going to continue growing students. We like to say we're best in the world of this, or we're number ten in the state of Ohio in this. And we will continue to welcome every child and help he or she continue to be the best they can be. Um, our buildings right now just got this data back. They are examining trends. We're looking at individual needs and teacher groups. It's important. So we can strengthen interventions and make plans to help students grow with their areas that we're falling short over time. But their areas are not paying attention to, what can we continue to bolster to provide opportunity for students? And this fall just alone, we continue to provide supports, add positions and things that can remove barriers. So students continue to raise engagement and the way, feeling like they belong in our school so that can access the curriculum and achieve at the highest level. Just last week, the communication department released the digital version of the Southwesterner found on the website, on social media. Evan and his team did that. But some other metrics that we're very proud of in addition to that state report card, I told you, we have the highest graduation, four-year graduation rate in the history of the district at eighty-eight point four. Our students last year, in class of twenty twenty-one, earned six thousand three hundred and ninety-six college credits. Twelve of those students walked out the door with a high school diploma and an associate's degree. We, our students earned one thousand four hundred and sixty-two industry credentials. And we had over twenty point one million dollars in scholarships for those seniors. And so where we talk about we have areas to grow at the beginning, we want to get them to the finish line and set them up for every opportunity in the world. And I'm going to close with this because there's a lot on here to say there is more work to do. There's a lot on here to be proud of as well. And right at the start of school, I got permission to share this from one of our staff members who sent a note. I removed all the names. Um, but, but I thought it was a powerful testament to the internal metric and the commitment of our teachers to continue serving our students. This individual said, I hope you share this. This is a high school teacher. I have seen a massive improvement in my students' reading and writing skills because of what is happening in our middle schools. I have this year been able to start the year with a research essay for the first time. Usually I do some small goals essay assignment, but I thought it was beneath what I've seen their abilities thus far. The students seem like they're confident in their knowledge of how to write a well-constructed paragraph, come up with a thesis, utilize supporting evidence and cite sources. This has never happened in my tenure in this district. I've also noticed a big uptick in the amounts of my students that have said they love reading. And many of them have attributed it to those units that are happening in middle school. Great job. And I just thought that was a powerful statement from one of our own team. Those are some of those internal metrics and those anecdotal stories that tell more of the story. So with that, I thank you and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
You, I mean, with the early literacy, do you think that had a lot to do with COVID? And the numbers, is that like statewide, do you see that? I mean, I don't know if you looked or not, right?
It's, it's a great question. I want to say it's certainly a factor. I'm not going to put all the eggs in the basket. But as I said, when you look at two pieces of data, you can picture where we were two years ago. And we were even a year ago. So it has to play some role. But I can tell you too, just being very blunt and honest, we picked a diagnostic that teases out, it's hard. And it's teasing out what students know and what they need to know, because that's how we transform the instruction in the classroom.
So Brian, let me take a chance at that. So what I think I hear you say, we chose another diagnostic we could have started with.
One hundred percent.
We told the board that two years ago when we switched diagnostics, because at that time we had a B. And we pulled it down for a period.
It was a little more two years, but it was pre-COVID, but yes, I know we've lost track of time.
So that's one of those where I, the board has never sent us on a direction to chase state report card. I mean, we want to do the right thing, sure, boys and girls. Brian said it. There's so much to be proud of. We're not sitting here saying we're perfect. We're, we've got lots of work to do. We're not satisfied with where it is. But we've made huge strides to try to get better at learning exactly where kids are and, and teaching instruction. Or be any instruction to them with the correct ones. Our staff puts in a lot of time. So, yeah, early literacy is not one that we can stay up and sleep about at this point. Um, because it's, it's our blood pressure at that point in time. And it's more important that we catch up. Do we want to be better yet? We need to double down on phonemic awareness and, and phonemic instruction and our work with Columbia Teachers College in order to get better. Um, and we'll do that hard work. So.
New question. Dr. Wise, you were talking recently, I don't remember where, so, uh, about the change that we've made in how we instruct in reading and writing, how we.
Here, I, I'll talk a little bit about that, you know, and you, you heard the anecdote. I think we're seeing results as we continue to build, um, workshop models. I don't want to get too educational here. Workshop models where students get small mini lessons and opportunities to practice and raise their, their skill level over time. And that just cyclical opportunity that started in our elementaries, this is circulated up to our intermediate middles. And we're starting to see the fruits, or at least some signs of the fruits at the high school. So that's an exciting thing.
Thank you very much.
This was excellent. Thank you for that.
Thanks, Bravo.
Now to items for action. Mr. Schreiner Personnel.
Thank you, President Johnson. On the board agenda this evening are eight personnel items involving two hundred and forty-one persons. This includes eight certificated resignations, one administrative employment, five certificated changes in employment status. One hundred and sixty-three certificated appointments, fourteen classified resignations, three classified changes in employment status. And forty-seven classified employment. It is also recommended that the Board of Education approve the new hourly rates for classified substitutes as indicated effective September sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. After reviewing these action items, I move them for passage at this time.
Thank you. We need a second.
Sure.
Any questions or comments? Same on roll call.
Mr. Schreiner?
Yes.
Mr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Mr. Busto?
Yes.
Mr. Martindale?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes. Next on the agenda, we have items for the session we're doing this evening.
Madam President, just a lot of people have been concerned with the election day going on and the security going on. Um, a lot of them want us to cancel that school that day, which I guess a lot of districts are doing, I'm hearing. Um, I know we're going to have police officers at each polling stations, correct? Um, I know we can't cancel school that day this close out, correct? Okay. I just, I just know there's a lot of people concerned with it. Um, is this something we could look out in the future with other elections, maybe having that?
Yeah, several of the parents that have been affected with this already, I think, Dr. Lusher and Honey have worked with. And said that if we can build it into the future calendars without creating some kind of major glitch, we'll, we'll be glad to take a look at that. The real question becomes, um, not so much a, um, general election. It's what you do with primaries and is a gubernatorial election different than a general election? For instance, I would go down the path of May. We just had to make primary, I think it was May third, I don't remember right. But essentially that was done without issue. Um, logistically, we were able to handle that, um, because the turnout wasn't huge. A gubernatorial election is different than a general. I mean, do we want to draw those distinctions? Are we talking now about post-November and springtime elections or February specials? If those are still a thing, I know. So, yeah, we'll take a look at that as we build the calendar and try to gain some input. But taking that adjustment moving forward, it's just going to become a little bit how they follow what priorities are. That's definitely something that we'll want to take in those hours.
I just wanted to bring it up to let people know that we are looking into it and talking about it. Thank you.
Anything else? Alan making a motion for adjournment.
Sure.
Thank you. We need a second.
Second then.
Thank you. We're calling.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Busto?
Yes.
Martindale?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes. Thank you all for coming this evening. Have a safe drive home.